Let's call need to order. Yes.
This is the way. States of America. Through Republic. Under God. This is all liberty and justice for all.
I know that's not right. It's live now.
Yeah, it is.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself.
I'm here. Trustee Gerald.
Here.
And trustee Michael Pincowski.
Sues. Approve of the agenda. I'd like to add. Business number seven. Generator votes. See it was in our packet, but not on the agenda. It's on new business number ten. Maybe library budget.
We just got it today.
Literally.
Just today.
It's none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second by Nichols. Motion carries. For citizens time.
I have a question for you. This is just curiosity basically. These old sand pit over here. Yeah, V N R. What's being done with it now?
State bought it, it's actually a. Thank you. I know that there's two lakes. The one on one side people are.
So are 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 we allowed to go there now? Cause I see I see cars parked over there. People going like they're going fishing.
Yeah, um, there is a little parking area right off of open walls. There's also one off of darling road. Right now, so it doesn't look like much. There is a place there, but there is no parking specifically outlined there.
Oh, do you have to have a permit?
I don't think so, but I don't know.
Sure you have to have my licenses and stuff, but I don't know.
Um, they do let you fish, but you have.
Oh, you, okay.
Yeah, they're trans.
Alright, I was just wondering because I go by there all the time, I see these cars. People getting fishing equipment out and going and. If that was still. Uh, ours or it was was it, it was sold to the state though. Okay.
Prove of August eighth twenty two. See any corrections? Motion approve the August eighth twenty two minutes. Second by Sharp, all in favor? Supervisors report. Just a couple things. Update on the Hoover's illegal warrant, she did file an appeal. Stay that she was allowed to. Things going to go into our insurance company to review. She's handling that. The champagne issued that split fine. Should be. It's no law. Conversation committee. Two people that are interested in being on this committee. Other townships also really have to solve this committee years ago and board determines their salaries. Total of five people for this board. That's where I'm at with the conversation. Second by Nichols, all in favor?
Alright.
Treasurer's report. Clerk's report.
I got notification from the clerk of Monroe County. That the last election class for this cycle will be September twenty seventh at five thirty. Um, at the Monroe County courthouse. Looking for election workers. I have emailed everybody that is on my list of hey, I want to give it a shot. However, you know, I'm still looking. Um, I did try to advertise it on Facebook. They wouldn't let me because it's a protected category. They wanted me to prove who I was. Obviously, they could just Google me and find out I'm actually the clerk. But they wouldn't let me because it was a protected kind of advertising. But so I am here again asking for election workers. Algorithms are wonderful when you have somebody that's checking. Oh, we do have an election coming up November eighth. But I had the election score. Four hours asleep.
Motion to approve the clerk's report. Turner second by Moore, all in favor? Building department report. Of six permits. These collected was seven hundred and thirty five dollars. To approve the building department report. Turner second by Moore. Assessors reports. Preparing and working with the clerk to. To prepare the five nine one military form which is due September thirtieth. And putting all transfers working on the twenty twenty three.
Make a motion to accept the assessors report.
Sharp second by Moore, all in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? This is for August. Some general statistics, as of this report, I've worked on three hundred eighty five separate zoning ordinance and other issues activities including forty four. Abandoned neglected properties and thirty four blind investigations. Fourteen new address requests, thirty four splits. Ninety two permit inquiries, plan reviews. Sixteen land use inquiries. Occupancy, eight solar and three flooding issues. Two hundred ninety eight of the above have either been resolved or otherwise addressed by any further developments. This time. New updated issues initiatives. I have need to place my Z A case note spreadsheet on a shared network drive for ease of reference by other staff. This document was created to A B in tracking Z A issues. Entries generally represent taxpayer time spent on individual issues in tax. People get entries usually represent separate activities on ongoing issues. This spreadsheet does not represent all Z A activities. Continue to save and share other documents and records on the shared drive for ease of access by staff. Have to change availability recently to accommodate family needs. Reducing availability some days while increasing others. Schedule should be posted this week. Posting and live stream township meetings to social media and other meeting requirements. Observe signs of some recent progress, several previously documented. Continue to monitor. For your time, please don't hesitate to contact me anytime with any questions or concerns.
So. Signs of some recent progress. Four months. I'm tired of getting phone calls about the properties. He needs to come up with some documentation for either attorneys or what he's doing. That progress that he sees. I really don't care what he sees. I want to see some. Progress you made. That's what I'd like to see because the phone calls are gonna stop.
Getting them too.
So.
What I can do is I can. Ask for documentation like the letters that we supposedly sent and. Everybody, the building and the zoning. Start documenting in B S and A, every time you talk to somebody. Dates, what was said. See if that's being done or not.
Any other time in the. I didn't know that Julie wasn't seeing me either.
She does the assessing part of it.
When 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 he got hired. To be at one or two meetings a month, I mean. Is he supposed to show up here or be available by Zoom or whatever else?
It's not something we've ever required. She needs us.
Sometimes. Not every time, sometimes. You can look at the sign in sheet, I don't believe he comes. Finding commission. About that.
I will say I'm about ninety nine percent sure.
What I'll do is I'll follow. He doesn't work here on Thursdays anymore, so.
This uh. Seen signs of progress. That's great. My 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 minutes on my phone have seen signs of progress too. Up. Off fences and all and junk cars in and not shit getting being done about it.
I've been on it too.
Yeah. I had somebody stop at my house.
I know there's there's a couple that I've been.
One of them's right down at the corner of Graham's. That's been going on for months.
Sherman.
Lincoln Sherman for. Months as well. I don't know what kind of progress we're seeing, but I'll tell you what, it ain't enough.
To him and address the issues and if we don't see any progress. By Sharp. Second. Sharp second by Moore. Zoning administration report, all in favor?
Alright.
Opposed. She carries.
Planning commission, uh, we had um. Three things under new business, nothing under unfinished. Uh, the first thing was uh. Ag industry special use permit. Uh, they had uh. Issue over there, they they done a blast that sent some fly rock into the one of the neighboring property's fields. More than one neighbor. Um, so there was a study done on that. Rob Hayes and another gentleman were present at the last meeting, they provided uh. Information about the blast. Had a third party investigator go out and. Document things. I I don't know. Is the uh. Mining and safety health. Administration and then. So. Got to address. That they're going to. I believe try and make available some of uh. Some more information on the township's website, so hopefully all that was documented and Mike's taking care of that. Blake. Little drawings. That detail, so uh, the planning commission. Except those drawings and sending back.
That was one of the new business items.
It was table for last meeting. Brought in little uh.
So on this, this is pending acceptable.
Um. He might have discussed some of that. So. That should have been in other zoning administrators' report. Stuff, right? Something else at least to be in that report. Discuss was the um. Solar ordinance. Took back to the planning mission exactly what I was directed to do about the um. You had one, had two commercial. I give them that information. I also gave them the information on um. Maximum space that they could, the twenty percent. Uh, the setbacks at least the same as abstraction. So there was a couple of uh, planning commissioners. They wanted to investigate some neighboring townships. What they have in place for a solar ordinance. I know somebody had pulled it up that. A lot of our neighboring municipalities have it in industrial. That's where it was at, so. They wanted to do some investigating, uh, a couple of the planning commissioners, so. That's why it's in commercials. That's what was discussed at the planning commission supervisor.
Report. Second by Sharp, all in favor?
The general fund under payments were. There were reimbursements for postage. For eighty three thirty four. Building department secretary. Decided to charge. Instead of the one I gave him. Oh, this first one to the general fund at thirty one thousand one hundred and seventy six dollars and eleven cents. There was only one check written out of the road fund, there were, it consists of two invoices. Thousand five hundred and forty eight dollars and sixty one cents. The sewer fund only had one check. Only one check written from the fire fund to N M R for seven thousand. The entire dis. Sewer, fire and road. Two seventy thousand eighty one dollars and forty two cents.
Motion to approve. Disbursements on the general fund in amount of thirty one thousand one hundred and seventy six dollars and one. Second by.
Trustee Gerald Nichols. Clerk Sharp, that's myself.
Supervisor Penny Turner.
Yes. Motion to approve three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars disbursements for the sewer fund. Should approve seven thousand nine hundred and ninety six dollars and seventy cents dispersment from the sewer fund. Sewer fund down here, but it shouldn't be fire fund. Second.
Second.
Trustee Gerald Nichols. Clerk Sharp, that's. Treasurer, some more.
Make a motion to approve. Disbursements. In the amount of twenty seven thousand dollars, five hundred. Twenty seven thousand five hundred and forty eight dollars and sixty one cents. Second. Second by Sharp.
Trustee Gerald Nichols.
The disbursements is. In an unfinished business, building department secretary. New applicants. On this one, she's interested in. I know it's small. Stephanie Mary. Sister.
No, I think she was applying for both, weren't you applying for both? Yeah.
This one has some computer experience.
Jumping out. Well, you did like this one. I didn't think this one was bad. But I would wonder why they wanted to, that looks like a pretty good job. Or that. And Britain's pretty far away. She doesn't have the representative experience. Yeah, that's. I can't tell. Uh, Stephanie, it's my one. Yeah, that's the closest. And she's applying for both. Well, it's still three actually.
It's being up a quiet right now.
I've got it near around to three. Same with you. Okay, I've got Stephanie Stacy.
I expect that Stephanie's got.
You don't see what's left? Here. Hand me my coffee. I have them all in my email, so I can look at everybody's. Maybe we can rank them in order one, two, and three, and I can call them.
See if they're still interested. If not, move on to the second one. Third.
Well, I mean, we haven't talked to any of these people either.
We can't.
Any of these?
Not in the interviews.
I, I would, I would like to see you and one or two other folks interview them and come after the recommendation to the board.
Yeah, or maybe bring them in front of the board. Well, we've done that before, we know what we got to do.
I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll reach out and, um, when I. See, I'll see which ones are still interested.
And bring her, um, top two. If they're still interested, back to you.
I don't know, why don't you come with a recommendation?
Set up interview time for.
I already spent so much time.
I just can't, I just can't spend.
Wow.
What? What's wow? They're just making noise.
All right, I will call these and set up interview times, that's, these is what's best time for you.
We're tabling this till next month?
Yeah, I'll bring it back.
Easy that way.
Making more work. I should have tabled. Building department secretary candidates until. Since I am doing interview process. Move by Turner, second. By Sharp, all in favor? Moving on to seal coating bids. Coming out of our COVID ones. Three. And lastly, two.
Compared apple to apple?
Uh, with their cracks. Silver coat, so, we have one for two thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. It's just still coating.
Here, I will go take in my guys.
Number two, we have A and J paving. Two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Number three is three thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Seventeen dollars, eighty cents from volume company still coating. They all have the crack fill. Include that.
They all did that. All include the painting of the lines. Striking includes the fire lane.
For both sides, you're just.
That lot.
That lot.
Yeah, this is where I'm on this side.
Or something, yeah.
Only one that has is the three hundred.
Almost has eleven thousand.
A and J has eleven thousand. He came in here. Came in here.
Last week.
Is that last week?
There was a gentleman who just dropped off something today.
It's a switch.
A and J's from Mylan Oakville Road, right over here. Mylan Road. Mylan Oakville.
A and J paving them?
Ones too. They've got everything covered, and the guy came in and told us what he was gonna do. Yep, I'll make a motion that we go with A and J.
Second.
No, you didn't wait for mine. I'm glad you, I'm glad you really liked the. Oh, well, I.
Okay, were, were you gonna go with that one?
Yeah, he done, forgot this is good.
I make a motion.
We've already got a motion, second.
Yeah, so you're going, you had your motion to go with A and J for twenty-seven fifty? Cause that wasn't part of the law.
Move by Nichols, seconded by.
Because Mike's not here, I'm gonna call him and excuse him another way, so Michael Pincowski is excused. Trustee Michael Pincowski. Chair release more?
Yes.
Yes.
That's myself.
Yes.
Trustee Daryl.
Yes.
PC recording secretary, we have two. Amanda and the Stephanie, also.
Okay, let one through then, the Stephanie's on the left. Well, no, because we need somebody to help us. Amanda gets well qualified, she's done that before. She's already in her tourney of the township, so we have no power of appointing her because she's an election worker. And she can start. We haven't made the decision about. That's my personal opinion.
Well, I got an opinion too. If I've got two people that are putting in for, uh, a job. And you're gonna interview one of them for another job posting. I think these two folks ought to be interviewed as well. The only one left to interview is Amanda, since you're already interviewing the other one. You didn't wanna be, uh, into the interview process, so Penny and Lisa can interview both of these folks as well. That's my opinion.
And do at the same time.
Yeah, absolutely. You only got one more interview to do. And that's fair.
Fifty dollars.
And make motion to table this until we can interview the candidates. Turner, seconded.
Table what? Motion table until.
Next month.
You only gotta interview one person.
Yes.
That's it.
I'll do it free.
I should check. Chair. See if he's up here.
Don't say Daryl. Don't say Daryl, I'm the liaison there. I'm not the chair, I'm not the vice chair. Did you do minutes for us? Absolutely did, you've done a great job, I am not gonna disagree with that. But I am just the liaison for that.
And ask him what his thoughts are. I, I, cause I can't get a hold of him. I'm just offering.
I can reach out to.
He tells me I'll be there, so.
Reach out to Dan.
Let's know.
All right, extraction ordinance. This extraction ordinance was approved by the planning commission. October twenty-one. It was never sent to our board for approval due to the DA resigning around this time, that just kind of felt. So, I wanna make a motion to approve the extraction section five point six oh four. It's public hearings, it's already been approved by the planning mission.
It's been approved by two boards.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve extraction operations. Section five point six oh four. Second by Sharp.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed.
Recreational Farm number thirty. This was passed by our board September thirteenth of twenty-one. But I can find nowhere that it's ever published. So I wanna approve it again, I make sure that it gets published. Motion to approve the Pond's recreational farm number thirty. This one right here. Yep. I just added that so you can see that we are. A motion to approve that. Second. By Sharp, all in favor? For that one. Painting bids. Same two. Included the black and yellow. Sides of the building exterior, reds and white, make the building exterior white. Two doors in a great mansion existing. Black trim around city. Necessary. Bog's residential is three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Clark Brothers Painting. Power washing complete building, paint areas on walls that are painted. Scrap is needed, spot print is needed, caulk is needed. Paint white areas, white, facial, facial trim, we make black match. Band scrape is needed, spot print is needed, caulk is needed, paint white areas white. His total is. Five thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars. We, same time, sixty dollars.
Also, he's getting us two separate ones for.
Yeah, I see that, so this total sum is six thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars. But if we approve both at the same time, it goes a discount to five thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars. So we have one at three thousand six hundred and fifty. And one at five thousand five hundred and forty-nine.
They doing both, both buildings?
Go again.
Well, is Boggs gonna be doing the, the power washing and the scraping too, or are they just gonna be like? I don't know, I don't see it mentioned in called out in the other one. Cause there is a significant difference in costs, however. There are additional steps to be mentioned.
Yeah.
So the scraping and the.
This, this power washing and everything.
Yeah, and caulking it and scraping it, like I don't see that in the other one.
That's a new complete bid.
And which one Boggs?
Yeah.
Yours is at home.
Young, youngins are not around with that. Although Joan is the one in my, I guess she knows.
I don't know, it doesn't say.
It doesn't say anything about fine. It doesn't say anything about power wash. It doesn't say anything about scraping. Cause you can go over and paint wherever you can wanna paint. And a year, next, next spring, we can all peel right off because that loose paint that never got scraped or power washed off. Cut loose and there it is. So right back to square one again.
Well, it does call out more services than Clark Brothers.
So I think we're going with the Clark Brothers.
I'm making a motion for, to go with the Clark Brothers quote for both.
Both for the.
Four thousand four hundred and fifty-two and sixteen eighty-seven. And if we, um, approve them both at the same time, then it's totally five thousand four hundred and, five thousand five hundred and forty-nine.
By Sharp, seconded by. By Sharp, seconded by Moore.
Is that for both buildings?
Yeah, I was surprised that he wasn't here today. It's like, yeah, but. How many people here today? Treasure release more.
Yes.
Yes. Generator quotes. Many bidder never could get back with me, I signed contract, signed a joint. Never signed it, sent back, I called, I posted, emails and credits. So I called the other two that made the um bids and asked them to rebid. This is the bids that I got. Rick Electric is seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Cummings. Seventy-eight thousand, and that's a Kohler.
Well, the.
Seventy?
And eighty.
Yeah. Eighty thousand or a kilowatt or. Four hours, eighty thousand. For seventy-eight thousand, the other one seventy-seven two fifty.
Selling houses and listing them, I see more caller generators hook up the house.
Cummins, Cummins is usually. Cummins you. Uh Kohler is not as hard and that's why, you know, I, I wanted to go with uh the uh uh generator, with their generator makes their own parts, they make everything themselves. You know, Kohler is second in line with that, they make most of their parts themselves. Cummins is the best brand name that you can get for investors. Real commercial. But they have a real hard time keeping stock of parts, so if something happens, if Cummins goes down, you buy late, you know how long to get parts.
Is that pre-pandemic or post-pandemic?
Right now.
The other folks. They're gonna provide and install two, two hundred amp transfer switches. Provide and install one, one hundred amp transfer switch. The battery, the pad. Pollards, I mean, they're much more detailed. Much more detailed for. Figure generator, so.
Do you make a motion for Adrian Electric?
Difference of seven hundred and fifty dollars, I don't think that would be a bad bid.
Yeah, I don't guess, so you get a lot more paying for your buck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
Yep.
Rose on second that. To approve Adrian Electric and generator amount seventy. This is all gonna be covered under a. Have to send it.
No matter who you get.
But they will guarantee this price.
Yes.
Uh Rose call go, um. Treasure Lee Sharp, I'll go first, that's myself. Treasure Lee some more.
Yes. Supervisor Penny Turner.
Yes.
Trust me Gerald Mickle.
Yes.
Mike and Kelsey.
Alright, under new business, snow removal bids.
I don't think we got it. So.
I mentioned to Anita that we have to go put it on the agenda, but we do need snow removal bids, um we don't have any yet, so if you want to uh.
Move the snow from.
In the front of the township and the sidewalks. Please submit a bid, um and I will also be making out to plenty of people to put in lawn care um for, for the spring. See if they're.
Snow removal bid.
Some calls too. Alright, moving on, Collingwood Estates rate increase.
Yes, I live in this, I live in that section, so yeah, it doesn't go up there.
Well, it hasn't gone up since twenty.
I know. And we're gonna talk in.
Lunch.
So, um. We were, it used to be forty-one fifty and it'll go to forty-five fifty, so over.
Now we're a week.
Yeah, it's, it's not big.
I can pick that much up in cans.
So, um, that's what it, it runs at a deficit right now. Um, I think the last time it was figured it was going to be running at a deficit anyway because there are only eighty-two customers and they were streaming it eighty-four ways and they were cutting themselves out by two. So, um, there's just points in the way it should be put.
So they, how do you notify, is it something that we have to publish or?
Yes, uh, there is.
Oh, I had a letter that.
I have written and given to me. But I will be um sending a letter.
I can reprint it, it's already done.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
So yeah, there's a letter that's going to go out to all of the residents notifying them of the rate increase. After we approve this. If you don't want to approve it, of course, then uh there will be no rate increase and then we will continue to run it.
I can't vote.
I'm actually.
I think you have to abstain. I mean, I don't know, you live in Collingwood Estates, so if you're gonna vote for it, good, if you're not, just abstain.
Help you out on there.
I'll make a motion and I'll second it. I'll make a motion to increase the total monthly fees for the Collingwood Estates to sort.
Forty-five fifty.
Seconded by Nichols. Do you need us to sign this?
Um.
Favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Sign this while we're here tonight, Kim?
That would be great.
One sign or each of them?
No, I want one sign, so.
I think I can put that in my budget.
Well, he wasn't here, so, um. Alright. You got a container over there, um, so you can take the ones from the township hall. Anytime we have election and I have cop hands, I'll just get them to you.
Alright. Three, fall cleanup dates. I'm looking at October fourteenth for our fall cleanup. We're not gonna do tires this time, only dumpsters. Just do tires in the spring.
So. Oh, okay, October fourteenth is a Friday.
And I would not be able to do a Friday.
Fifteenth or twenty-ninth.
Oh, no, don't take my Halloween.
Do you feel good?
Fifteen looks fine for me. I have no idea, um, but my sweetie can uh even handle it in town. Actually, I'll be, I'll be there.
That is. I just Googled it, it is.
The only other day is the eight.
Celebrate with your sweetie by cleaning up trash.
Right.
And then go out ready.
Yes. This time, um.
Saying this one should be easier, it's, it's just the dumpsters and mostly. Time I about took a bath in a couple of those bitches. Alright, let's do October fifteen. Nine to five?
Nine to five would be.
Let's do nine to four. Start slowing down.
Fall cleanup on ten fifteen.
Nine to four, and it's dumpsters only, we will be doing tires. Make sure that it gets on our webpage and Facebook pages to get down to people. Four dumpsters this time, I think we still have some. Right, so.
I will have to look, I was looking at that today and I think, um.
Alright. Second, do we have a second?
Yes.
Turner, seconded by Sharp. Team from nine to four, dumpsters only. All right, dumpster jam. It's two thousand.
And I can't even go pull it out of the work of the owner or someone else. So I think it was.
At least two thousand. Could've been more than that.
Put up to four thousand, they're safe. Try to get four of them. Yes.
Penny Turner.
Yes.
Treasure release more. Yes. For Turner, that's myself, yes, and trust me, Michael Pencalski.
Number four. Go with money for a nonprofit donation to Little Darlings Rescue Ranch. How to donate to nonprofits in our community, give back to the community. This one was brought to my attention, Little Darlings Rescue Ranch. So I reached out to them. And they are nonprofit, they did provide me with a copy of the nonprofit license. And they had an Amazon wishlist, so I went on there and looked and picked out some things. So I would like to make a motion to donate five thousand two hundred dollars to Little Darlings Rescue Ranch for equipment. And I don't know, I don't think we have an Amazon account, we.
No, um.
Well, yeah, cause I can't buy it, we wouldn't be able to send it on a credit card, I could probably send it up through my Prime and just add the banking account or at least at one side, have some money over there. You might wanna double check because I thought there was a, um, for the township. When Lisa Francis was here, I'm pretty sure that we created one to be ordered something for the township, I am that. Okay, cause I know that when Melissa was here, she didn't know what it was either, that's why we didn't give you mine. Well, maybe just try putting in the London for email address or something and see if you can do it after that password. Just to double check, I'm, I'm just saying, I thought there was one.
I can go search the emails too.
They, they got a wishlist on Amazon.
Well, but, um, have you told about which total fifty-two dot hundred?
Say fifty thousand. These are bigger items. This is what this costs, this is what you, this is on the wishlist.
I know, I just didn't know what constitutes fifty-two hundred. Gonna throw it out there, I need to know what.
This is what you need to order, I'll get all of them.
Yes. Okay, that makes more sense because it's like, are you picking and choosing?
This is the total for everything that I.
Okay, so I went a little.
This is uh all it stops, and I rounded it up to five thousand two hundred.
Did anybody second that yet?
Do I have a second? Turner, seconded by Moore. To approve a donation to nonprofit Little Darlings Rescue Ranch in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars.
It's small.
Trust me Gerald Mickle.
Yes.
Treasure release more.
Yes. And supervisor Penny Turner.
Yes.
Yeah, cause this, if all of this.
Number five, assessor raise. Is up with our assessor. Conversation with her, she's agreed to stay on as the assessor. But she is requesting a raise from twenty-five thousand to twenty-seven thousand. Of course, she did a wonderful job, it was through that audit. Also did a surrounding mineral accessory salary, so you can kind of look at what other assessors are making around us. Sell their all contract. Tried to stay within our, our parcels, same amount of parcels. She has agreed to stay on, she was requesting. She, she's scheduled to work on Tuesdays, but she's also been coming.
I was saying she works every week.
I'll make a motion to approve our contract, signing contract with Julie Roche, our assessor at the rate of seven thousand. I can get everybody a copy of the contract. Building official and deputy building official raise. The resolution just steps before you raise, they are on that list. They're doing a great job. Summer came in and stuff, so we're doing a really good job. I haven't had any complaints. Motion to raise the building official from thirty to thirty-five. And the deputy building official to twenty to twenty-five dollars. Building official said that if, if we had a problem with that, that he would uh take a five dollar pay cut. Make sure that this deputy got a five dollar raise.
Well, I'll make a motion to raise the pay of the building official to thirty-five and the deputy building official to twenty-five dollars.
Turner, seconded by Moore.
Are you making comments while they're going? Oh, okay. Carol Short does myself, yes.
Assessor, number seven, assessor training class. Julie has requested to, um, attend a class. Sixty dollars, it's a computer V S A class, a virtual class. Assistant Assessor. It's designed to hands-on experience with a report designer. This course covers adding and designing user reports. She's requested to attend this class. Turner.
Yes. Louis Moore. And trust me, Michael.
Can you let her know tomorrow?
Yes, I will.
Number eight, update cemetery procedures.
No, I didn't.
Talking about, um. Something.
Oh. Um, well, actually, it's not, it's, it's yes cemetery procedures and no. Cuz it has his, um. We bumped everybody and may as well bump him too, cuz he cleans the cemetery and does the trash and the maintenance and talks to. The families and helps them find the grave sites to put their loved ones and so. He included on this? No, he's not. He had a whole separate list that I was never able to locate the file for.
I just think Terry loves to really.
He does a really good job. Thing that doesn't seem to be on here. Hourly wage, it only has family consultation. He's been paying fifteen dollars an hour for trash ever since I got here, I think that's what I was telling you it was for the trash duties, so I would think that it would be at least the same.
Gene for trash. I forgot that you said he does the trash.
He does the trash. That's what he currently has, so if we're gonna bump him for the hourly wage for, um, the, the. Family consultation, it makes sense to bump it the other way too, but that's just my opinion.
I have a question, I'm like on Townsend Road. Mill Heisen, there's a.
Stuff growing up in the fences.
Is that his job?
I can check with him, I know that he, Mill Heisen, um, I believe that's the one that there's not three, it's. Yeah, it's like an over dribble field and he goes in there, he doesn't do it very often. But that wouldn't be included in the trash duties cuz he gets paid for all of this on. That should also be.
It's in. Contract for mowing is totally separate from this, isn't it?
I've never seen a contract for mowing for the cemetery in the three years that I've been here, so all on that one sheet. Cuz he currently gets for the London Plank Road Cemetery. Three sixty-eight, sixty-four per mow. The church across the street on plank is a hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-two cents. The Townsend Road line is seventy-eight, ninety-eight. Mylan Oakville is sixty-five, seventy-eight. And Mill Heisen.
Maybe.
Look, that would be the trash. All of these to the cemetery or?
I guess my question is just under the snowing, does that include cleaning up all that brush and the fences?
I can't answer cuz I've never asked that question. So do you wanna table this till next one?
Sure, I'll make a motion to table it till next one. The, uh, Fred's question answered.
Seconded by Moore's table. Procedures. Nine, MTA Regional Summit. All in favor?
Can I have your jokes up?
Because, um, the metro. Dumpster at, at the metro park.
Moving on, number nine, MTA Regional Summit. Kim, Lisa and I would like to go to this, there's different topics for each one to, uh, attend. So I wanna attend the broadband and the grant writing. Two main ones for me and there's, um, what was it they wanna attend. And the cost is.
Four September.
It's a hundred and sixty-six dollars per person. Check with. Chefs.
Move to the training thing, you've already said it.
Would like to make a motion that Lisa. Did the regional summits, October eighteenth and nineteenth. At the cost of.
A night per person plus whatever the hotel is. But we get a discounted rate at the Comfort Inn, I think it's eighty-eight dollars a night.
Hundred fifty-six times three.
Gotta figure out the mileage.
So much.
I think it's eighty-eight dollars a night.
Say two hundred dollars just to be safe.
Well, we can do that, seven hundred dollars for us, I think.
Seeing seven hundred dollars.
Per person.
What?
Total?
Total. It's total.
You just said it's two hundred dollars a night for.
No, I said, I think it's about, I want, no, it's about eighty-eight dollars a night, with taxes probably gonna be about a hundred.
So there's two, four, six.
No, we're gonna all stay in the same room, we're not like dudes.
Well, tear it up. Well, good, I'm just trying to understand what you guys are doing.
Yeah, uh, we have no. Girls wild, gone wild.
Night out.
Oh, okay, but you said girls gone wild, it's like, I would love for that. So if you wanted not to exceed seven hundred?
Who seconded that? It's very good training though.
I learned a lot when I went up to the Up North Summit, you know.
I'm all about getting this free money. Ten, the maybe library budget. This is only going up by next year to this year by twenty-five dollars. Share will be two thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. It's not bad. Eight hundred eighty-four thousand seventy-five cents for the. Second citizens time, anybody?
Yes, I got one more thing here. Internet, I see somebody mentioning last week or like your last meeting, is there anything being done to get internet out here?
I am working with World Beach, their company, um, Dexter. They, they're the only company that was even interested in coming into our township. So they are applying for grants and stuff in the states, we're waiting for the feds to release the money to the state, and the state will release it to the grants. But I have a map in there, you wanna look at it, the places he wants to put it. We were talking about going overhead, so I haven't heard, I can call him, see what the update is, I know he's been attending meetings in Lansing. Silent Township, I believe it was. Looking at us, Exeter and.
So there's something being done about that, okay, now you keep mentioning COVID money.
We hear that. Received federal grant money.
Okay. Okay.
Federal COVID money. At first it was really tight and it's still kinda tight on what you can spend it on.
Okay.
Um, you can do nonprofits in your community that give back and you can do roads. Could do roads, you do percentage on roads, percentage on the building maintenance. So we're trying to spend, what you don't spend, you have to give back.
Okay, the reason I was asking that, I, I was wondering, why couldn't that be used for the internet, or is that out of range?
It can, but it, we don't have that much, so.
Okay. Okay, uh, that's fair enough. Uh, but if there is something being done, so that, uh, that's good. What it all boils down to on that, is Uncle Sam controls the purse strings on that. So whenever they feel like letting any money go, maybe it can move forward, because they had been talking about this four years. Four years, and it's the same stuff over and over, and they had three hundred and fifty-three million or three hundred and thirty-five million, whatever it was. I don't know how much of that has been spent. Least. Same thing. Waiting on the people in Washington D C.
I think the one on sale was like the U S D A thing, grant that they got, I mean, there's other things that he's looking at too, to combine with that federal money.
Why I can't.
So he's talking, it's gonna be lines.
Trees are in the way, you can't get.
I got trees too. You like Joanne?
Well, I do. I don't have internet available at all at my house, not at all.
Not even with B B Q wireless?
That, that, that line that they just ran, um, is that last week?
Or that, what was it called?
It's A T and T that ran that line. They said it was for a business, they ran it over eleven thousand feet, I talked to the guy. So that guy ran over eleven thousand feet, and he said that you'd be able to tie into that.
You, you asked them that?
Yes, I did, I said, who would this be available to? He said, this house right here for sure, because that connection is really close to your house, you'd be able to tie into that. And he said you would have just blistering. He said more than likely. He said more than likely a business had that running down there, cause it was somebody private that had asked for that, and it was over eleven thousand feet. From, uh, down by Pancakes. That's where it come, cause I thought he was gonna continue. That contract to do.
I know when I tried Comcast, they had no interest.
Comcast. And well, Comcast lies, cause I've been calling for sixteen years.
So I, I have tried, yeah, I appreciate it, as long as you're looking into it, that's the main thing. I've tried several of these ones, you know, that, they're like no main ones. I stopped at an A T and T store, in fact, it was in Celine, and I ended up going to the one in Monroe, that's where I go. But I, I bought an Orbi. You know what an Orbi is?
That little air cart?
No, an Orbi, it's about, probably about yea tall, big around, and it's for, uh, internet. Really for a phone, is what they sell it for, which is for internet, that's what I got. I don't have, not an Orbi, but I've got a little box that I got from A T and T. And that operates off the A T and T towers. So these folks that say, hey, you know, I use an A T and T tower, they, they certainly use it. But you'll notice that those, those, uh, uh, I guess, uh, unbranded or, you know, they seem like secondary companies, they're not like a Verizon or A T T. You know, your, your internet might be good for six months or eight months, and then it just goes away, right, you know, they, and it's this or this or this. A T and T actually owns those towers, so they are the one that sets the, uh, parameters on which, uh, all those operate, so the guy told me, he says, you get this Orbi, and, and I had to buy the Orbi. Yep. He said, you get that Orbi, and our internet for unlimited, uh, per month, I know is under a hundred dollars. I think it'll operate anything we have, you can string. Yep, I do, I, I do, yeah. I got A T and T too, I got that. But they're the ones that have the towers around them here, so, you know, when they have that tower, they're the ones that, um, you know, get to pick and choose how those work, you know, the, the other companies that tie into those. Right. Because I've had four, five, six, eight of them, you know, that were good for three months, six months, eight months, and then it's a new car. Or it's this, or it's that. Right. But I'll tell you what, that Orbi has been the best one that we've had so far. The one, what I've got is good too. Since May. Man, I've never had an issue with it.
I don't have any problem with Verizon whenever I hotspot it to my laptop or one of my systems. Verizon doesn't, it's trying to be fifteen gig of data and that's three, one hour.
Just, it's beautiful, I, I can tell you.
Off my phone, I'm still limited.
I, I've, I've got a Verizon phone, but that A T and T, I mean, there, it doesn't slow down, it doesn't, they, they don't, uh, they don't throttle, they don't.
Even though I hate them.
They need them better. They, they do, they, they take your business.
Anyone else?
No, I'm good. I enjoyed your stuff tonight, I told you, very informative.
So I saw the post about, um, D K, their passes on the ditches, they think that might really help. However, I, I've seen some very nice roads, it go down my road, and the roadside of the ditch, it's not even fully mowed. Whereas this is their second pass for this year, and, um, back in March when you guys approved it, the, um, proposal said that they would go twenty feet, meaning the other side of the ditch as well. And I have pictures on my phone, I can show you right now, like, standing in my driveway looking at the ditch. There are still really tall weeds on the roadside, and everything else hasn't been touched. Yeah. Exactly, and like I said, I mean, I just, I just watched the video earlier, and I can show you the, I clicked it, I screen recorded. So I mean, if you wanna listen to what the proposal said, um, if you don't wanna go digging or anything.
Think I saw, how did I keep all the contracts in?
But it said for the second pass that they would go the twenty, twenty feet, you know, because they had the longer boom, that was, that was why. But, um, like I said, they didn't even finish the roadside of the ditch by my house, and they went, I saw them go by a couple times. I don't know if they're planning on going back, but with them already making a couple passes, I didn't think that they would be covered in on the road. So I just wanted to make you aware of it. Um, there, like I said, there are places in the township where it looks great, you know, it looks a heck of a lot better.
I see they're finally doing the main roads.
Yeah.
That's cause of the weeds are so high.
Yeah, I don't know.
Rest of getting like.
Yeah, well, actually, in fact, I had to kinda go around D K when they were doing the corners of my road. So, I mean, I know they do a good job, um, I don't know who was running the tractor going down my road, and I don't know if they're gonna make another pass for playing at it. Just wanted to make you aware. Uh, yeah, if either one of you, if you wanted to speak with me, just let me know, um, you can send me a text message or email.
I'll get, I'll get a one, yeah, we're trying to do all, if we can, as much as one day, if I can get everybody settled.
Well, I'm, I'm fairly open Monday through Thursday, um, cause all three of my kids are in school now, so, um, I'm, I'm pretty open Monday through Thursday.
In the evenings, work for you too, on those days?
Um, the only evening I can do is Thursday. But yeah, pretty much any other.
Alright, anything else? Sees. Lisa, you got anything?
I have no comment.
You're?
No, just other than, uh, uh, the zoning administrator, uh, detail on his reports and, uh, I'd like to see that, be updated. Uh, I, I certainly need some detail and issues that have been ongoing for months. Certainly would like to see what action plan we have in place. Cause no plan isn't acceptable.
Yeah, I mean.
And I'm not asking anymore, I've asked.
Remotation return.
Fourth, fifth? Like dinner, same.
Point description like that. Oh, no, no.
Okay.